Good evening, everyone. We're gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order at this time. Please turn off cell phones, electronic devices to off or vibration. Mr. Bob McDaniel, would you please lead us in our prayer pledge this evening, sir?
Heavenly Father, as we go into this meeting, give us wisdom and may we walk the walk you want us to walk, talk the talk, and think as you want us to think, act as you want us to act. In your name, and may we, anything we do tonight or say tonight, any decision we make tonight, may it glorify your name, Heavenly Father. And in Christ's name we pray, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, City Council may consider to discuss the approval of the minutes from the September 3rd, September 9th, September 16th, September 20th, and September 23rd, 2019 meetings.
I'll go first. On September 3rd, uh, meeting minutes underneath the Board of Directors', uh...
Name is over there.
The name is left off. Go down to... The next meeting, September 9th, underneath the adjournment. You have me listed as Jason Getz. Oh, wait, you get there. On the next meeting, September 12th. Scroll down. Where is it? I'm gonna yell the marker. No, the next one. September the 23rd, under Executive Sessions, segmented by J.C. Gore. Under the adjournment of that meeting, you have the time wrong. Wrong that, what is in the... And that's all up now.
We only have the minutes for the 3rd, the 9th, the 12th, and the 23rd?
Right, the 3rd and the 20th.
Or the same?
Yes, sir. Does your representative remember the nomination on the President's word?
I would have to go back to the video. I do know that Sheriff Clayton contacted me afterwards and withdrew her name, but that's all I can remember. We had Bill. Yeah, I have to go back and watch the video first here. I don't recall the names.
Any others? No more than that? Alright, motion to accept the minutes as presented with corrections. Second?
Second.
All in favor say aye. Alright, any citizen who desires suggests City Council on a matter not included on the agenda may do so at this time. Per the open meeting, that's the City Council may not deliberate on items presented under the agenda item. Our presentations are subject to a five-minute timer. Yes, sir?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember. We seem to be having a problem with our water the last week or two. Uh, just brown rings if you leave water standing. And I just want to know what maybe our situation or...
Yes, sir. Uh, our, our, the Bounder, well, let me go back. Currently, we receive water from the Bounder Lake and Lake Ivey. Uh, the Bounder Lake, due to climate change, uh, we're going from summer to fall, so the weather's getting a little cooler. Our lake is starting to turn over. Uh, it's gonna raise the, or actually in this case, from heat to cool. It's decreasing the manganese level. And we were treating it like it was July or August. Uh, so we're pumping a little too much sodium permethanate into the water system, which is what we use to treat manganese. Uh, we've turned off our Bounder Lake water to let it settle a little bit. It may take a couple of weeks to settle back down. Uh, but we have, still have a lot of this, this water in the system that's discolored. Uh, now, we're using straight Ivey water, which the manganese is still, uh, good at, at that level. Uh, we're just, we've gone into a big flushing program to try and flush all the discolored water out of our system. Uh, we've had TCEQ come out. They watched us flush our system. We've increased our, uh, uh, testing. Uh, you know, we, we test weekly anyway. We've gone to testing daily, uh, just to make sure that these manganese levels are coming out down in our system. So again, the, the water plant is looking a lot better. The water coming out of the plant, it's just the, uh, you know, we got to get it out of our distribution system.
Good, thank you. Another thing I always ask, the new water tower out there, that's the high school?
Yes, sir.
I notice it's being under repair?
Yes, well, actually not yet. It's fixing to be.
Looks like somebody's been welding on it.
Well, yeah, they, they went in and, and they, uh, they cleaned a bunch of welds so they could do some testing on the welds. What it is, TML, our insurance carrier, uh, they, they, they're trying to figure out the best way to, to work on the tower. You know, they repair it or get a new tower. Uh, they, they hired a third-party inspection or engineering company to come in on their behalf, and they've done a lot of testing on, on different wells. They suspected might have problems on the anchor bolts and I think on the foundations.
Sorry, I missed that. Could you save me?
Yeah, anyway, so, uh, they've done a lot of testing on it. They think they can repair it or had it repaired for less than $300,000, so...
Now, would a new job be better?
It would, it would be for us. It would be, you know, uh, but...
I'm sure it's an issue, right?
It is, it's with our TML insurance. And that, and those are the ones who have, uh, who are looking at it. And we've come to a, well, they told us, our engineer that we're using, the original design engineer was Hibbs and Todd. That's who we're using for the repair on our, on our part, on our behalf. Uh, they've told Hibbs and Todd to go ahead and, and, uh, work up a, a scope, a scope of work for the, for the repair construction and the inspection and everything that comes after, you know? Uh, 'cause there's gonna be a lot of inspections and after it's repaired and recoded and sealed. So that's kinda where we're at on the, on the water standby. Uh, we're, we're in hopes that you'll have to go out to bed after they get the scope of work ready. And then, uh, we're hoping that after the first of the year, we'll have a construction crew in here to, to actually start repairing it and working on it. Uh, we have been working a little bit up there on the ground. Uh, there's a internet company called Nextlink, uh, that we were, we were gonna let them, uh, use the tower, the water tower for an antenna. They're gonna put their equipment on top, up here, and they, they towered it apart. Uh, but right now, they're just gonna move in a temporary tower, uh, internet tower. So that may be some of what you see here lately if you're looking.
Okay, good. I, I don't know, we're not mad, but my five minutes, they got one more question.
He's talking more than you have.
You know, Bounder used to have a undercoated force, but all these lots around town grown up, yards grown up, everything, they used to send out letters. 'Cause I was a registered contractor with the city at the time, I'm not anymore, but... Uh, it just seems like we're not seeing that. Can you, what, these letters going out, or these lots being cleaned, or these old houses done something with?
Right.
Is that something ongoing or what?
It, it is, it is. Uh, we've, uh, we have a, uh, like on the houses, we have two or three that still need to come down.
How many, what do you...
So far, like, seven this year. Six or seven this year. Yeah, uh, and, and we had a big summer as far as mowing, and it took us a while to get caught up. Uh, and, and, but we are, we do that continuously, all the time.
Does the city mind, though, any personal lots?
Not people's personal lots unless we charge them. We may send them a letter, and if they don't respond, uh, and there's some people that, they own a piece of property, but yet they're not gonna mow it. And we, uh, it's pretty exorbitant. I think it's $400 a lot, or something like that, uh, that we charge if we have to go in and... But we send them the letter, give them a chance, and then we'll go in, mow it, and either go build them and, uh, or put it against the property as a lien. So, uh, I mean, we don't wanna get in the mowing business, so...
Yeah, I know. I didn't want to either, but again, thank y'all.
Yes, sir.
Have a good evening.
Tommy?
Yes, sir.
It's not really our call whether we get a new water tower repaired or...
Well, we, we were, we're actually... It, it's actually the insurance company. Uh, we, we were asking for a new water tower, 'cause that's what we thought we needed. We had our, our engineers, uh, interacting with the insurance company and the third-party, uh, engineering company. Uh, they were, I wanna say lobbying for a new tower for us.
Good.
On our behalf. And, uh, but they feel like that break-even point is $300,000. They got a bid from a construction company for, right at $200,000, but it didn't include any of the engineering work. Uh, and, and, well, there was a lot of stuff lacking in that quote. Uh, then they got, received another bid for, it really was $250,000.
So the new tower would probably be the manganese bug.
It's possible.
I'm just saying.
Right, right. But, uh, anyway, they, they, since the insurance company feels like people can repair a lot cheaper than getting a new one.
And as a footnote to Skipper's water question, no health issues?
Uh, no, we've had TCEQ come out. We test it weekly. Uh, if there were health issues, we'd issue a boil water notice.
But I understand that. And any negative effects on our RO system?
No, no, none whatsoever.
If they decide to repair the tower, TML still gonna cover it?
Yes, 100%.
100%.
Yes. Yes, and, and they have given our engineer the authorization to proceed with the scope of work and, you know, the scope of inspections. So they're, they're authorized us to do that, or actually our engineer to do that.
I mean, even after fact, after repair with it all, they're still gonna cover like a new tower?
Yes, yes, they will cover everything. Just like, you know, if we got a car damaged, then, you know, your insurance company would, would cover that car like you in 100%.
May I come up? Yes, ma'am.
First, I'd like to introduce myself. My name is Chris Robertson. Um, my husband David and I, we own a home at 409 North Sixth Street. I want to thank you for the privilege to be able to speak to you today. Um, I am addressing you also regarding the recent concerns and comments voiced about our city water. We've lived here for four years now. Immediately when we got to town, we noticed the foul smell, discoloration, and taste of the water. We purchased a water cooler and, um, since then, that's where we, um, what we used to drink with and cook with. We didn't realize that our white clothes would become stained with the rusty color, and unfortunately, till it's too late. We assumed it was with the age of the home that we were living in in that time. We started noticing the toilet bowl being lined with the rusty residue. The tile in the showers had rusty residue. The shower curtain had the same. And the morning, we received a notice that the water had been tested. And the notice down the bottom, it said with the pollutants and other chemicals, there was a risk of cancer. We, we realized the risk of cancer comes in many forms, but we couldn't understand why in our water. So over the past week or so, um, there's been great activity on social media, Facebook being the current example, or the only example that I know of. Um, I'm sure if you are familiar with Facebook, you are familiar, or, pardon me, should you, you should probably be acquainted with the page Rants and Raves of Bounder. Um, so on this, um, Facebook page, um, it's not just completely dogging Bounder. My husband and I like it here along with our son. We moved here from Lubbock for a job change. Um, let's see, I gotta help myself. So, um, from the, um, post that I found on Facebook, everyone recognizes the press release that came out on Friday, which we're glad about. But I, and I'm sure everyone else, wants to make sure that no one thinks that we are blaming a specific person. We are concerned about the specific problem. So, um, there were people who stated that they had clothes ruined. There's pictures. Um, poor little Donald Duck got washed, and there's a picture with the rusty residue of him as well. So what can we do to change it? Now, um, in your, um, newspaper article that you were interviewed for, you said about the lake turning over. Well, within the four years that we've been here, that lake was turning over a lot. Because, uh, we, we never noticed a break in the cycle, I guess is what I'm trying to say without being a smarty pants. So, at any rate, um, we've just noticed that there has not been a change. So, um, there was one, um, lady on the Facebook. Um, I went back to print out her, her comment that she deleted it. But she said that she was 73 years old, and ever since the time that she had been born and raised in this town, the, um, water hasn't been, gotten any better. Someone else stated that their grandparents and great-grandparents drank it and bathed in it over and over, so perhaps we need to just move along. So that leads to another point. How many people perhaps have died of cancer because of this water? And also, um, there's mentioned by another person about charcoal as a possible, um, way of... Thank you, that's the word, I was looking for. So, um, this was mentioned by a gentleman who has a Class C water distribution license. He has nothing to do with this town, but he threw his two cents worth in. So, um, I guess what we're getting at is the fact that if the water has been the same for the 73 years that that sweet little lady has, was born and lived here, then why hasn't our, um, equipment been brought up to speed? We have elementary, junior high, and high school students coming home with laptops to complete their assignments. Why haven't we updated our water treatment facility? So I have pictures if anyone cares to look at them. Um, there's minimal, um, problems, like, well, I don't think this person would think it's minimal. Um, it was their work clothing was damaged as a result of this. And then there's Donald Duck. Um, someone said to try OxyClean, and someone said, no, I've already tried that. So we do have a lot of positive coming out of this, but we do have quite a bit of negative as well. So, um, I took pictures of the, um, compartment where you put your detergent into at my washer. There was that rusty, slimy, gunk in there. So I completely took that out of the washer, and with 409 and about 20 minutes of, um, really scrubbing on it, I was able to, um, get it cleaned. So, um, I guess the bottom line is, um, we know that Bounder's a small town. However, this is the 21st century. Our lakes can't be turning over that much, for there'd be that much residue at my washer. Now granted, it's just three of us at home. However, um, I'm sorry, that, I thought just about something else. So at any rate, so that's, um, that's where we stand. We just wonder why we're, um, can't get past what we're at, and why we can't update the system to where it's more current, to where, um, we don't have these problems.
You're absolutely right. On the facilities, we, we do have a, well, I wanna say state-of-the-art facility, bits, I think 15 years old. Uh, it's, it's, it's a really good water treatment plant, and we have an RO system, which there's a lot of cities around here who don't have what we have. Okay? Uh, a lot of it boils down to the water quality that we give from, let's say, the Bounder Lake. Okay? Uh, it's a smaller lake as opposed to Lake Ivey. Okay? So it, it's affected a lot quicker, uh, depending on your intake at Lake Ivey, but it, it's affected a lot quicker. What we need to do is figure out how we catch that quicker, you know? In a day, you're, you're, what you're, we're battling is, is iron and manganese in our lake. Uh, and the manganese...
The manganese is, what's that brown color?
It'll, it'll, it can change, I mean, really, uh, I wanna say overnight, but it may take a process of two days. You, your manganese kinda sits, it can sit in a level or a layer in the, in the lake. You have different stratospheres and, you know, it may sit in a, you know, in a, in a middle layer for a little while. Uh, but when the lake starts bubbling up, uh, that's when you start catching a lot of more manganese that was, it may have been sitting on the bottom for a long time, right? And now it's starting to come up. And that's what you're catching when you're intaking your water. Okay? If we, if we can catch it early enough, we can make adjustments to our, our sodium permethanate. Okay? Uh, and some of it is just trial and error. You're trying to figure out if I back the sodium permethanate a little bit, you know? But, but what it boils down to is you know this time of year's coming. It happens every year at this time. You know, you have, you go from, uh, summer to fall, and then from, uh, you know, winter to spring. And that's when we have these problems. Uh, so we're trying to figure out the best way, I mean, if we have to increase our testing during these months, that way we can catch it earlier and we can back it off, or swap our, our water supply, say from Bounder Lake to Ivey, or if Bound, I mean, Ivey's having trouble, then we can swap it to Bounder. You know, that, that way we can, uh, be a little more responsive instead of letting it get in the system and it take two weeks to flush it all out. 'Cause typically, that's what happens.
So when you say flushed out, will you describe that to me, please?
Well, we typically go to our fire hydrants and open them until it starts running clear. And now, it's, we do have some interaction within our pipes. We have some old pipe that, that we're having to deal with too. Uh, but that's, that's, it, it's not as big a factor as what we're having to deal with at the plant. And, but we'll take, go to every fire hydrant town and open it up and let it run. It may run for 10 minutes, 20 minutes, you know, uh, till we can clear that line of, of, of the discolored water. And, uh, and it's, um, we've been doing this for three or four days now, trying to clear all the lines. Uh, in fact, uh, some of the people in houses that cleared, you know, they just turned their, their water on. Uh, one individual went through 1,200 gallons until it started clearing up at his house. You know, so...
It's a lot of water.
It is, it's a lot of water. But it, it may depend on the line that you're on. You, if you're, if you have a water main that has 25 houses on it, uh, you're gonna clear it faster than if you have 10, right? 'Cause you have 25 families using water, washing clothes, washing dishes, doing laundry. So that line will clear out a little quicker. And, uh, so it just kinda depends on how heavy, what, what usage is on that main line.
Okay, so it's funny that you're mentioning that, because I do have a person who says that she's a family of five, or five children and herself, I can't remember which, who says that they are daily using it quite often. And so it's not, it's not clearing out at her home.
I saw it close.
Okay.
But then again, today...
It's gonna be the whole line though.
But, well, I mean, I've got a guy, uh, on 11th Street who, his water's clear. His neighbor is still having red water and struggling.
So how's that possible if they're on the same line?
Well, it could be that she, you know, honestly, I do not know.
I appreciate your honesty.
I mean, you know, the only thing I can think of is the guy who's cleared. Maybe he ran his water for a while.
Maybe he owns a cleaner or something like that.
Yeah. Yeah, but that's not 1,200 gallons, you know? So, I, I mean, he may be on a different line, even though they're next door to each other. And that, that's what we don't, I mean, we have to actually go investigate, like in your house. Which I need your, your address again.
Sure, 409 North Sixth.
Uh, see, we can go and, and look at your particular situation if we need to. We can flush your, your, your line at your house. And what we can do is take a reading at the meter, okay? Flush, and then take another reading at the end after it clears up. And then we just turn that into the, to the office here, and they don't charge it for that water, 'cause we're just flushing that house.
Okay, that's a good idea, and I appreciate that. However, what about the, um, another elderly lady said, it's been like that, it's always gonna be about that, I'm not going to a meeting where nothing's gonna change? So then you have this little old lady, sweet as pie. Her stuff is still gonna get ruined because she didn't speak up and have her lines flushed?
Not necessarily. If we can, if we can, you know, we're trying to get more proactive on the testing at the plant and, and the water coming out of the lake, uh, or, or raw water line from Ivey. See, when we test these, you know, we can tell what the manganese, manganese level's gonna be. Okay? And, you know, that's what we're trying to do, is get a little more proactive on our testing. That way we know beforehand that we need to make adjustments. That way we don't face this problem once you go out in here. So hopefully that gets fixed. But in the meantime, all she has to do is call City Hall, and we'll send our water guys to go investigate. And if it needs to be flushed, we can flush.
Okay, so what happens if we weren't able to get water from Bounder Lake nor from Ivey? Um, we moved from Lubbock, our water came from Amarillo, I believe? All the way down from Amarillo, other than the fact that it was hard and there was a calcium dip or whatever deposit was on the faucets. It was still drinkable, you didn't have the smell, you didn't have the discoloration or anything. So are there, um, perhaps, um, a Plan B? If we can't get the water in Ivey, or if we can't get the water in Bounder to come out better for everyone, is there a Plan B for that? Like another water source?
That's a big, big, big question. Okay? Which kinda rolls back into what if we get a drought? Okay? And we have a contract with the City of Adeline. Uh, we have a contract with Milwaukee Dual Water Supply. Both of those actually get dirt water from Ivey. Okay? With the City of Adeline, if Ivey were to ever go dry, there's a contingency plan for that. Okay, so we will have water. Uh, the quality of the water is what you're talking about. Okay? We're able to treat it. It's just our response time, right? I mean, we can take water from like Spence, which is very salty, as of the past, salt. Yes, salinity content, okay? And we can treat it. We push it through an RO system to knock some of that out, and we blend it with, with, you know, water, whatever water supply we have. I mean, there's, there's things we could do to try and step up the quality, right? Now, our quality is a big word, because the quality in the water's okay. It's just the look of it, and sometimes the smell of it, depending on, you know, what's going on at the lake at the time, you know, could be the problem.
Okay, so back to the smell. If we don't do a load of laundry a day, if we skip maybe one or two days because it's just three of us at home, that next load that gets washed smells like somebody unleashed an ungodly smell.
Right.
So we have to Febreeze the laundry room and the hallway out there because of that smell. So how does that come into play?
Well, it was your question. Well, actually, I would have to investigate.
Six years?
We would have to look at it a little further. That's why we would need to come to your house and look at it.
Have to look at it specifically.
Right, right. Because you, you're getting very specific on some of the stuff there.
Because I live one block from you. I don't, I don't, you know, it's not that far, but I don't have, I haven't had any problems this go around, so I don't know, then I do.
But she lives about five hundred meters, flushed off. So that main line may be flushed out a lot quicker than what you're on. That's why we need to go look at your house.
Might be a pretty clean.
See what your line is on and, and we can move forward.
Okay. Well, um, I guess that's going to do it for me. I appreciate your time and-
Thank you for the questions. Speaking of-
Thank you very much.
In line up, her question. Particulates along with decolorization. I'm writing on the clock. Through yours now. And, and I've had parts, what's, the particulates in the water?
And it's going to be, uh, I mean, the sodium permethanate, it, it, it causes it to kind of coagulate.
Okay.
It's not vegetation or anything from the lake. It's just, you know-
Well, I'd say like in-
Yeah, when you shake it out, it'll dissipate, yeah.
He had the same thing. Mine had clogged my toilet, the, the filter something.
Yeah.
Not the, not the leak inside.
Yeah.
But, and so I've had to flush that out twice since this story.
Right, right.
But I haven't had, I haven't had a big buildup of brown. I've had to, it comes in and then 20 minutes later, I'm clear again.
Right, right. And, and like I say, they've been, they've been tweaking this all last week.
Right.
And, and we've, we've actually, uh, we brought in a consultant. Uh, he's a, he has a A water license. Uh, he's actually got a double A. But, uh, to kind of help us find out where we can figure out this, this problem before, so we can treat it before it gets as bad as it is.
There were people we had AIDS with.
We had the same player.
Right.
Yeah. But, uh, you know, we're hoping things improve.
Yeah.
We're, we're working towards that. Uh, we're already, you know, like I said, that's planning, it's already improving. Uh, some of the changes that we're making, uh, the consultants working with us, uh, closely, trying to get everything evened out. And again, I, I think the big thing that I would like to see or that we're, I'm pushing is, is, you know, catch it before it happens.
Yes.
You know, make the changes before it hits our distribution system and, and hits people's washers and, you know, messes the clothes up.
And that's a very difficult thing to do because when this stuff starts churning, we expect enough coal that we can do that there is no.
Right.
So anything we can do to alleviate that, we try to do.
Right. And we have what the different filtering systems. In fact, I was talking to Rick last week about, what was it?
We have green sand and-
Yeah, see, right now we have a sand filter and looking at-
Green sand looked up and it's just mighty huge stuff.
Yeah, you know, alternate filtering system. So this is what we're talking about with our engineers at Athleen and our, our, uh, our, our A class, class A water license consultant.
Good comment.
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry. Uh, sound's been here a while and I've been here often on the long time.
Yes, sir.
But this has always been an issue, even after the new water plant, you know, every year we got to go through this. But in the days before this new water plant, Dr. Sukin Albert from Canada, they came here would not let their patients drink water.
Right.
But I think it's very possible now.
And it is. And, uh. I've lost my train of thought about it.
I know, but it's been very important. Same thing, if it was up to do that rule all over the whole lake, don't they go plug it?
Yeah. Well, I, I mean, we're not the only ones affected here. I mean, Coleman went through this about two, three weeks ago. Uh, I think Athleen went through it a little bit. Uh, San Angelo, I think, is going through it right now. So, I mean, we're maybe not to the degree, probably because they caught it before it hit their system, you know? Some of it may have gotten through, but it's starting to clear up a lot quicker than ours because we were trying to figure out, you know, what's, you know, what, what to treat in order to get it cleared up.
But if you want to talk about bad, Lo will remember and Carl, Carl will remember. We used to bring water down the cotton road and like spin it.
Right, right.
And pump into our lake, our new button.
Right.
And that was some bad stuff.
Right, right. Yeah.
Yes, sir. Yes, our water's terrible. I have RO system in my house and I operate the water. I've changed filters every month. I was going with $200 a month in filters for supposed to last six months. Um, why was, uh, I know Randy was slated to retire November. Why did he quit early? And we don't have anybody licensed to run the water plant. And I think it is a class B license if I'm not right. Please correct me, but we have nobody running the water plant with a license to operate it right now, correct? Because the gentleman that was being trained in our tank handle quit and left and went somewhere else, right?
What happened when we started all this? Well, Randy retired months ago. He, uh, came back-
Slated for November 3rd, retired probably.
No, no, he, he actually retired. He, he'd been working part-time. And then he came to me, uh, I think it was last month, and said he, he wanted his last day to be November the 8th, uh, because he was, uh, working with his grandson on a fishing team and he just wanted to do retired grandfather stuff. When we started all this last week, I called, uh, our Jacob and Martin, who helped us in the past on some of the water issues that we had, uh, to see what we could do. And, uh, I, I had been talking and working with Randy. Uh, he, uh, Jacob and Martin called him and he, uh, decided that he wanted to go ahead and retire. So, you know, uh, there's nothing, I mean, you know, he was going to retire anyway. As far as having a person run the water plant, we, uh, we have a, an A operator, uh, that is operating the plant now. Uh, he's from Athleen, he retired from the city of Athleen. And he came online two, three days after Randy put in his, you know, final, uh, final date. And so that's who we have. His name is Bill Drake. Uh, he'll be coming out of Athleen, uh, to fulfill our, our requirements. We do have a C operator in Thomas, Thomas Ammons, uh, who is, uh, he'll be able to, to run the plant under Mr. Bill Drake. And he will be working on his B license. We do have a, uh, we are on the lookout for another C or B operator. But till now, I mean, uh, that's, Bill's the one working with us on trying to get our manganese levels straight and everything else. So he's our TCEQ operator of record.
I was thinking about maybe, uh, putting in an RO system where people can go get some drinking water instead of having to buy it. I've been there since 4:03, water hasn't been any good in all those years. So if purchase drinking water for people, there'd be a lot more happen. Instead of letting them go have to buy it, just have something to drink and pay a water bill too. Wouldn't be wrong with that.
You can drink our water. I do.
You're about the only one that does. Yeah, I've been, been living, I've been around this problem all my life.
Right.
And I never could figure out how come you guys didn't put an RO system where at least they could get something to drink without having to go spend our hard-earned money.
Well, we have an RO system at the plant and, and we blend it with our-
Do you have RO water for everybody?
Uh, we don't.
Comes through your pipes?
Yeah.
Do I consider your faucet?
It's about a 20% blend. We blend our, our treated water with RO water.
Yeah, I know.
And that way-
I'm an old man, but I'm not able to-
Well, no, I understand. We can't, we can't do the whole thing in RO. I mean, it would cost pretty-
Well, you can't do the whole pipe, but you could, instead of entrepreneur down here selling water.
Yeah.
The city can furnish water, at least from the public. People here that lived here in family tax, at least package water. I mean, and not worry about their health.
The city of Ballenger could do that.
I'd like to do it. I'd like to be, I'd like to be able to-
We would have to look at the, uh-
You know, I'm not fresh morning.
No, um, we, we would have to look at that a little closer as far as finances.
Well, they're paying for it anyway.
Yeah.
And, uh, y'all grew up all the time on it. You ain't got nothing to sell on the dirty water.
Yeah. I understand.
I mean, everything's simple if you get down to the basics. For me, I'm just happy to put that in.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate your input.
Are y'all still sending out letters on THM or not anymore?
No, sir. Jacob and Martin's engineering company that helped us, we, we changed our injection point. Uh, so we don't have the THM problem that we had last year, year before.
Remember last time we said?
Uh, so we're, we're, we're in, within compliance with TCEQs. So, uh-
But that's what we're interested about cancer causing if you drink a lot and things like that.
Yeah, yeah, that was, uh, the TCEMs were the problem with cancer.
In fact, over the years, TCEQ has changed the requirement that they're still restricted. It makes it very difficult in smaller municipal cities to make those guidelines. So therefore, it's caused headache on a lot of people having to send out these letters because they, you know, making people think, oh, we're going to get cancer if we drink this water and we, we bathe in it.
Yeah.
They do this on laboratory testing of rats.
Right.
And it's such a minute amount.
Right.
That it has to affect a rat and it takes thousands of times more than that to affect a human being. So it's, it's not a scary thing to think you're going to get cancer by drinking the water, taking baths in it. Uh, that's not going to happen. It's been here since 50 something, 50 something years old.
I'm a 50 years old, I've been around here before.
So you made it.
The Ballenger, the Ballenger water is the Ballenger water.
I didn't rush the Ballenger water. The Ballenger water now.
Ms. May?
Uh, I've lived just in several different states and, uh, everywhere we've lived, we've had problems with water. We've always had to buy our water. So, but when we came here, I, I do cook with this Ballenger water, but I'm still buying my water to drink. But it's, it's everywhere you go.
You can do it in a big way, but you can do it in a little way.
I understand.
You can do it in a little way, but you can't bend it when you're right.
I understand.
You can do it in a little way, but you can't bend it when you're right.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, I just wanted to ask how, like we purchased mosquito spray earlier this year.
Yes.
And I was so excited when I saw the spooky stuff where they're in the alleys or whatever.
Right.
And I haven't seen it in quite some time and when I called, it told me maybe discontinue and just wondered why.
Well, uh, we had a gentleman working on, on, on his, uh, his license, his applicator's license. And we had had a, a, uh, an agreement with City Winners to work under their license. And our, our intent was to work under their license until we got our, our, our guy with his license. TC, uh, the EPA actually came and said we need a, a little better agreement that we haven't been able to get to yet with Winners.
But can you tell them last year that we didn't have a license personnel so they tend to get a license to run the equipment?
It is kind of extensive. I mean, they didn't-
It's most harmful.
Well, it depends on the person studying and, and, because it's, it's like a book. Yeah, and, and so-
So that equipment's just sitting out for all this time?
Yes, until we can get our license worked out. So we can still work under the City of Winners, but, uh, we got to update our agreement.
Can we get a fine for doing that or they just want?
No, they, no, they, they accepted that we were working under it. They just want a little better agreement.
But they shut you down?
Yes, they, they asked us not to, to discontinue until we got a better agreement with the city.
All right, no one else, we're going to move along. City Council may consider discuss the installation of a four-way stop sign at the corner of 13th and Pew Avenue. Is this at the bridge?
Yes, yes, it is. It is back. Uh, we've talked about this a couple of times. I'm not sure who put in this request.
You didn't do it?
I did not.
Well, we talked about, we, I don't know who-
They've definitely taken the phone.
But what you talked about before, it just needed to be-
I don't know if everybody knows, but there was an accident.
Okay.
By the way, admittedly.
How many have been on that list that I sent in of stuff?
How many?
Another top, some of it too.
Failure to yield.
Coming across the cross?
Yeah, another P bomb. It was actually involved a motorcycle.
You said another, how many have there been there?
Two so far. Right, the, the last time this came up, an individual had a wreck.
Okay.
Uh, and we had, we had moved the, uh, the yield sign up to the road. Uh, we had talked to the residents about their, their fence because, uh, so I need to talk with, uh, with Steve to see where we're at on that.
That's what I was going to ask, that it comes in the same direction from the fence?
Yes, same direction.
And, uh, so-
We didn't get that look back there.
Not the fence, no. I know we talked to them, I don't know what the outcome of that was.
Okay.
I will talk to Steve on the fence.
So we'll tell you this, can you talk to Steve?
Yes, please.
All right. Motion to table the installation of the four-way stop sign at 13th and Pew.
Make move.
Second?
Clear.
Oh, may I say aye? All right, City Council may consider discuss approval of the two days to have election office open from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. on October 25th and 26th, 2019 for the Lone Star Market event.
I assume that half would be to the-
That doesn't mean they have.
Not this half.
Sure, basic prayer. Matt Lopen is asking.
We do that every year.
Tim?
Oh, yeah. I think he's part of that.
This is the one block. Don't do it every year. Last year.
You have a question? You're okay with it, not okay with it?
No.
Not? Motion to close half of Road Road Avenue between Broadway and 6th Street on October 25th and 26th, 2019 for Lone Star Market event.
All right.
Second?
Clear.
All right, City Council may consider discuss approval of the two days to have election office open from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. on October 22nd and October 29th, 2019. These are the Tuesdays of early voting, is that correct?
Yeah.
Yes.
I'll read that motion.
Second?
Clear.
All in favor, say aye. All right, City Council may consider discuss approval of the inter-local cooperation contract for failure to appear program with the Texas Department of Public Safety. You should have that contract in your packet. Uh, do you need to follow up with the council?
No.
No?
Standard contract.
Standard contract?
This is the only program that we use. If we have a failure to appear at municipal court or what other circumstances do we use on?
Well, it's, uh, you don't renew your license and all that stuff.
Right.
Insurance.
Yeah, what this is tied to the, to a person's driver's license. They renew every five years and, uh, what the police or municipality or whatever agency, they'll attach things where you have to clear it up before you can renew your driver's license. So that's, that's basically, we're part of that program and that's all this contract is. It's something where we already do.
We already do it.
Right.
All right, any other questions? No? All right, motion to approve inter-local cooperation contract for failure-toappear program with the Texas Department of Public Safety, please.
Make that motion.
Second?
Second.
All fair to say aye? All right, City Council may consider discuss concerns from Philip Art about the financial performance of the City of Ballenger for the 2018-2019 fiscal year.
How are you all today? Great to meet you, sir. I am fantastic. Can you keep saying that till I believe it? I appreciate y'all letting me speak today. I'm only here today because of my concern for Ballenger. That's why I'm here today. My daughters, of which I have four, remind me often that emotions are important and need to be recognized. While I do agree in general, emotions should never be the basis for sound business decisions. What we've experienced over the last 12 months is an example of when emotions overrule objectivity. A toxic atmosphere has been created where honest observations and objective questions are ridiculed. Everyone that has participated in the media, on social media, and in these very chambers is responsible for the current state of affairs. It was a joint effort. However, the brunt of this responsibility, honestly, is with this council. And honestly, some of you on the council really enjoy the spectacle. I spent 12 years on this council under Tommy New, Steve Nixon, and Brian Grimes. When the accusations of fraud first came up, I sent each of you emails explaining where to find the information you were looking for. Told you it was in the minutes. I told you to go to the bank accounts. I told you it was in the actuals. I sent you emails asking you to review the monthly financials, that it was important, that y'all need to be paying attention to this. There was no change. I've responded to accusations in the paper, both on the website and on Facebook. The response in the paper is that I was too afraid to come speak accounting. That wasn't what I was afraid of. I didn't want to create this. So if you insist on spectacle, then reluctantly, I'm here today. You've had your FBI, your Texas Ranger investigations, you've had your additional special audits. Included in these audits, included in these audits were the infamous videotape, the missing CDs, and the review of all fund activities. All these investigations and audits are closed with no findings of fraud, irregardless of what you read on social media. These are closed deals, they're done. Now on to 2018 and 2019. While we've ridden a wave of emotion this past year, I have some specific questions and to give credit to my daughters, yes, I am giving them to a little emotion here. It's not my nature, but here I am. November 22nd, 2018, in the newspaper, "City Administrator Looks for $360,000 of Cash City CDs." Bob, you're quoted, "I'm concerned about leakage and overspending." Have you paid attention this year?
My concern was one person cashing those in. That was my-
No, no, leakage and overspending, that's not, that has nothing to do with one person cashing those in. It says overspending. It's a quote in the paper.
Well, I don't remember saying that, but I will believe whatever you say.
I took it out of the paper. I took it out of the paper. Here's some more from the same article. "One difference between Ballenger City Council meeting and some others in the area is that Ballenger does not receive a full financial report every council meeting." That's what was stated in the article. Uh, also in the same article, "The city finances obviously need some serious attention as the current state is continuing to deteriorate. There's been no accountability thus far and it remains to be seen as to how the previous administration managed the budget or failed to manage the budget." Then skip forward to November 29th, 2018. This is where people are getting their information from. The title of this article is "Ballenger City Administrator Continues Search for Funds." And here's the article. "It was pointed out that there should be a financial update to the council at least once a month, and this has not been happening in recent memory. Why it didn't happen is a question the council and the mayor will have to answer and it should become a regular monthly report in all future council meetings. The council can't be expected to make good decisions without knowing how much money they have in the bank or how much money is coming in. The people of Ballenger pay their taxes and bills and deserve to know where the city's money is being spent and expect transparency that has to this point hasn't, to this point has not appeared." What's interesting is 2018 finished up 0.1% to the budget. 0.1%. That was with an interim city manager. 0.1%. Not quite sure how this one paid attention to. Randy did a great job. Grimes' worst year in 2015 was 5.6% under the budget. He averaged about 1.5% to the budget. Bob, how often did we review financials for Brian, the assistant city manager?
Every month.
Every single month?
You're exactly right. That's one of the negative parts of Tommy's evaluation.
Well, I'm just, I'm just asking-
I'm just telling you, you have not got that under Tommy. But we did under Brian, you're exactly right.
Now, Jason, did y'all receive monthly financials when Randy was acting?
Did you get my plan? So, not but.
So when did you stop receiving monthly financial statements? And then how did it get to be the impression that this has never been happening? Nobody stood up to correct anybody? Nobody said, "We always, we always get them." Nobody said, "Man, we need them." January 31st, 2019, "Terny Making Major Strives in the First Five Months." Uh, and I'm not picking on you, Tommy, and, and, and I'm gonna focus on this right here. These are the accomplishments. Presenting updated financial reports at all city council meetings. That happen?
No.
That was an accomplishment in the paper, this is what everybody believes. Uh, creating greater transparency in the city operations, city budget, and other matters concerning the governing of the city. That happen? Some of it, maybe. Work orders? Work orders got better? Did the budget get better? Did your understanding of where you were, the budget get better? Improving the efficiency of the water department and the street department. Did that happen this year? Listed as an accomplishment, did it happen?
Yes.
Did it? Okay, good. Okay, I'll get it back to you. I'll get it back to you. We'll look at the numbers for this year. All right, I said during the hiring process, there were those applicants with their impressive degrees in city management. This is you, Bob. To some, there may have been on paper more qualified than Tommy, but in my heart, I felt that Tommy was the man for the job and that endorsement remains as strong today as it was then.
Amen.
Yeah, so it is perfectly fine to hire somebody with no experience. It is perfectly fine. It's within your rights.
Midfield experience.
No city management experience, he's never managed the city operations. Has he ever managed city operations in his resume?
Probably not.
Okay, well, that's what I'm talking about. This is the job, right? The city manager is the job. This is what I'm talking about. I'm just trying to be real clear. Has he ever managed the city?
He has not.
Okay, all right. So it's perfectly fine, cause he has a lot of knowledge. Tommy has a lot of knowledge. He's done a lot of stuff in his career, but he hasn't managed the city. So when you hire somebody green, you have a business background. When you hire somebody that doesn't have that background, what do you do? What do you do, Bob? When you hire somebody that doesn't have the history, that doesn't have the experience?
Well, I must, to answer that, I agree with you. I don't agree with you. I think Tommy has more expertise than you and I both know.
In managing the city? And how government finances work?
Tommy, why don't you answer?
Hold on, and how government finances work?
Well, I assume he does, cause that was part of his, uh, his, when he applied for the job, he had the experience of working with the state and the federal government.
Did you work with city budgets, city governments, and general funds and business funds and...
I worked for budgets and-
No, I'm talking about the governmental accounting is totally different.
Yes, yes, you're correct.
Yeah.
General fund accounting is-
It's different.
It's different.
It's backwards.
Wait, it is, it is.
Right.
It's a different animal.
And I'm not, I'm not holding to the expectation that you were supposed to know that. I'm not, I'm not, Tommy, hear me, I'm not saying, but I'm saying, I mean, we hire green people at Mewer, and when we do that, then we take extra care to help them through that process, to inform them, to spend time with them, to explain things to them. This is how this works. How do you know if you've never, Ballenger is a tough city to manage. We are a relatively poor city. We don't have oil, we don't have gas, we don't have windmills, we have sales tax, we have property tax, and we have water. That's it. And of that property tax, you get 9% of that in January and February. Did Tommy know that? This is where the city council comes in. You have a lot of years' experience, Bob. More than anybody else sitting here, I guarantee. All right, February 14th, 2019, "City of Ballenger Says Money From CDs Has Been Accounted For." The positive side, here's the quote, "The positive side to all this is that Terny and the council are on a level playing field financially. A week after February 4th council meeting, Terny had already begun implementing the recommendations. We know that the city has a little over $200,000 in reserve." A little bit later on in the article, "The internal controls being implemented will ensure that in the future, any reserves used won't be put into the scapegoat category if it went into the general fund." Later, on April 11th, it was reiterated that the city had $200,000 in reserve. At the end of June, in the operating account, it was $1,614. Where'd that $200,000 go?
That reserve, whatever we're referring to as the CDs that we had at the bank.
So there was no other, there was no additional reserve?
No, I mean, that's, that was the reserve that we had.
Okay, good.
And we still have it. It's still banked.
It's still there. The $200,000 is still there. And I think in that, in that same article, it said five years ago, we had 700, really we had about 595,000. Yeah, it's a, it's a, it's a, I'm a bean counter, so I know this stuff like that. But, but right. So, you know, you had a bond payment due in May. Were you ready for that bond payment? That tightened things up quite a bit. Uh, finally, in that April 11th article, "Texas Ranger Closeout City Funds Investigation." Uh, the February 14th, when the City of Ballenger says money from CDs has been accounted for, for some reason, those two articles, the headlines didn't make it into the public for some reason. "Now there's also a great deal of oversight by the council in the operations of the city and the budget. The current councilman, Jason Gore, Bob McDaniel, Rick Morris, Councilwoman Christie Gutz, along with Mayor Sam Mallory, don't simply rubber stamp any requests made by Terny. Everything is questioned and explained." Do you have a great deal of oversight on the budget? Do you know what happened to you this year? Do you have an idea of where you are financially? How many financial statements did you receive?
No.
We got about four.
About four?
Three of us, we were down.
Three or four?
But I asked for three and we, we, we didn't give.
Well, yeah, I asked, I think, when we were converting to seven years, but we, we, three or four.
So what was most, uh, I'm gonna get it back. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna, I'm not kinda trying to trick you into actually what the issues were. I mean, cause if you only received three or four, then you're, you're not gonna know what the issues were. But this is, uh, these are un-audited numbers, and what that means is the auditors have not looked at them. Typically, there are some minor adjustments made to these numbers in the event of, uh, damn, I'm so glad I did 10 of them. So 2018-2019 financial performance, very first slide there. I'm gonna show you 2018 versus 2019, and I'm gonna show you 2019 budget versus 2019 actual. So as you can see, in 2018, we had revenues of 5.296,630. Those were the actual revenues. Actually had record revenues this year. You had $5,366,190. Most of that increase was in sales tax. You had a record sales tax year. Uh, it kinda, kinda saved, saved the budget, that sales tax did. Expenditures? In 2018, the city spent $5,304,231. In 2019, the city spent $5,653,367,367. That's a $349,000 increase. And I can tell you the vast majority of that is in street park and compensation. For the budget, you budgeted $5,628,277. That's, that's a huge number. Let's, you know, go for it. At the actual, I already said, was $5,366,000. You budgeted on expenditures, $5,620,000. You overspent that budget by $33,000. That's your total, that's kinda your total. So there's a shortfall this year of $287,000, $287,177. That's the biggest shortfall at least since 2012, which has very little to do with the prior year being 0.1% on budget. All right, by fund, if you look at the next page, the general fund, general revenue was $3,670,000 in 2018. It went up to $3,239,000. That is, for the most part, sales tax, and I'll show you that. That's a $171,000 increase. However, the problem in the general fund is your expenditures went from $3,175,000 to $3,560,000. That's a $385,000 expenditure increase on a $171,000 revenue increase. That puts you upside down. Versus the budget, you're about $88,000 below the revenue target. Still, it was an aggressive revenue target, just $88,000 is not too bad. However, you're $238,000 over your budget. On the business fund, uh, business funds, which if we recall, those are water and airport. In 2018, you had about $2.2 million, uh, $2,229,000 in revenue. Uh, that's down this year, $2,126,000, that's down 102,000, due for the most part to the rain we received in September through April, which at Mewer, we're intimately familiar with that rain. And on the budget, you'd budgeted $2.3 million. It only came in at $2,126,000, so you're $173,000 short of the revenue goal. The good news is, your expenditures on the water and airport on the business, the business expenditures were actually down from last year, $2,92,758. And they were below the budget of $2,297,785. So overall, you broke even on the water plant, which is the majority of the business revenue and expenditures, and you significantly underran the general fund. For your total revenues, as I, as I said, the majority- For your total revenues, as I, as I said, uh, the, the majority of that really is sales tax. The second largest is property tax. Your property tax revenues were very close to budget. Your sales tax revenue were just under budget, but still significantly higher than last year, a hundred sixty-six thousand dollars. Trash is trash, you, you give most of that back, uh, to the public. However, that, that number, you know, did jump up there pretty good, a hundred and ten thousand dollars more. And then the other is just a general category of fines, penalties, assessments, all the little categories that fall into that other category. Your water, sales went from two million, one hundred seventy-two thousand down to two million, seventy thousand. The budget was two million, two hundred forty thousand. You fell short there, a hundred sixty-nine thousand. And then the airport was pretty close, four thousand dollars variance on the budget. And, basically, airport was equal to last year. On your expenditures, this next page, this is, this is, um, the one that's a little bit more eye-opening. You were two hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars over budget in the government fund. City Hall, the police, the fire department, animal control, Parks and Lake, and community center, all came in under budget. They did a good job managing their budget. The street and lights department is over their budget, two hundred and fourteen thousand dollars, two hundred and fourteen thousand, five hundred and thirty-nine dollars. That's a twenty-two percent miss in street and lights. Sanitation disposal was up also, budgeted at three hundred seventy-five. And this is what you pay republic, four hundred fifty-nine thousand, five hundred eighty-one, a miss of about eighty-four thousand, five hundred eighty-one dollars.
When was that still, um...
I think...
Don't we know what we're gonna pay republic?
Well, I think Tommy's looking into that, um, I think there were some overcharges on the public side that they're going back after. Um, I don't know if it'll make up that eighty-four thousand dollar difference, but it'll, it'll, it'll shorten it a little bit. You gotta watch those folks. You gotta watch everybody, I don't wanna be too upset. Okay. Uh, city pool was thirty-five thousand dollars over. And the administration was thirty-nine thousand dollars over. But your biggest miss there, uh, your two biggest misses really are in your street and lights and, um, sanitation disposal. The next one is, is, is what's a little bit concerning and something to pay attention to, because, uh, this could, this could potentially cause issues in the future. And that is your total compensation by department. The most significant increase in compensation is your street department. There was a hundred and ninety thousand dollar increase from twenty eighteen to twenty nineteen in your street department. The problem with compensation is that's people's jobs, and you can't turn that off and on. You can't just wake up one day, or you can, but it's... Personally, I think that's pretty bad business. You gotta really monitor that. If it's project-related expenses, you can always stop doing projects. You can stop buying rock, you can stop buying pipe, you can stop buying all kinds of things. But when it's compensation, it's a little bit stickier. The next one is water and sewer. Water and sewer, uh, compensation is up ninety-eight thousand dollars. Now, for the street department, that's a seventy-three percent increase in compensation. And for water and sewer, that's a twenty-six percent increase in compensation. I think those are the areas, uh, to really focus on this year. My goal here today is, uh, I have some other historical information in the packet I'll go over, that y'all can just review, it's twenty twelve through twenty nineteen, um, results, the, the, the fund totals, the revenues, the expenditures, uh, for y'all to, to peruse and look at. Um, you know, this idea that's out here that, you know, y'all started off with a bad hand, I would submit to you, you did not start off with a bad hand. It's difficult to manage Ballinger, Texas. It's always been difficult to manage Ballinger, Texas. You know, the only thing worse than yellow water is having no water. And that's what the previous council faced, was we had no water. We spent a lot of time on that, and a lot of effort on that. Y'all have, y'all have challenges out in front of you today. You know, I would encourage everybody, uh, to just get to work. Let's stop with the finger pointing, let's stop with the he said, she said, um, um, but let's, we gotta get to work. I mean, we can't keep blaming other people for our problems. Got enough problems right in front of us right here today. Got enough issues with us right here today. You know, and, and the more senior members on here, you gotta pick up slack. You got a lot of experience, you got wealth and knowledge, and you can't sit back and just lob rocks. You actually gotta be, and if, and if somebody has a problem, you know, they shouldn't be put on a hit list. If somebody raises an issue and says, "I don't agree with this," they shouldn't be put on a hit list and yell that from the audience. And that's happened. I appreciate you guys.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you, Joe.
Guys and girls, that guy is the general center, I'm sorry, I just, uh, my English is incorrect.
Questions, concerns?
City council may consider discussing approval of authorization of the Ballinger Police Department to apply for grant with Walmart Foundation.
Walmart gives this grant out every year, and it's for community relations. Uh, we plan on using it for community relations materials, stuff like that. Uh, we just have to have a letter signature somewhere there, so we just need it to get approved. So, it's twenty-five thousand dollars, a little bit, but it'll help for literature, um, or, uh, public relation, uh, events that we have, uh, stuff like that, so.
Anybody have anything to ask, anything else? We're good. All right. Must approve the authorization of Ballinger Police Department to apply for grant with Walmart Foundation. Second?
All fair and say, yeah.
Yeah, we might have taken one of these sixes out of there. Three, six, 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 uh...
Oh, you're looking at the letter, I'm sorry, I didn't have it up yet.
I'm just saying, you, you got two of these.
Okay.
A minor for it.
We'll fix that before I sign it.
City council may consider discussing approvals of having a homecoming parade on October eighth, two thousand nineteen, on Eleventh Street from the high school to the football field.
High school's gonna go from Pronto, from the high school to the stadium. Uh, we just have to shut down Eleventh Street for that time period. Um, and we have a couple barricades, basically that's it, and then us...
It's in the evening, right?
Yeah, it's in the evening, seven o'clock in the evening, tomorrow evening.
Okay.
Every year.
They kinda threw this on us, and just figured I might get approval mixture.
That's fine. All right, must approve of having the homecoming parade on October eighth, two thousand nineteen, on Eleventh Street from the high school to the football field. Second?
Second?
All fair and say, yeah. All right, city council may consider discussing approval of the building permits. I believe we have four or five in your packet.
Yeah, they had the sixes, they had a T I there.
Got it, got it. That was a good one. Let me get that up here, there we go. Here we go. Yeah, can you put that desk over there? Yeah. That's dissection. Uh, first one is gonna be, uh, John and Marty Galvan. It's gonna be for the house, yes. Yes, uh, they're gonna build a house, uh, at the corner of, well, it's on, on twelfth, well, Avenue E at twelfth Street. Uh, it's gonna be next to Brandon...
Brandon Davis.
Brandon Davis, right. Uh, right behind John Nord, yeah, John Nord. So you have John Nord, you have an alleyway, then Mr. Galvan, and then Mr. Davis. Steve went through this, they've got plans, uh... I don't see plans on the board here, but, uh, not up here, but they, they do have the building plans in your packet. So... And they were approved by, by COVID persons. We have no problems, no issues.
And the next one would be Mary Ann?
Uh, let's see. Yes, Mary Ann, the next one's gonna be Mary Ann...
Cycle.
Cycle. And this is gonna be, uh, porch. And there were no issues with that.
It's on the front or the back of the house?
Twenty-five by ten by five.
Just the step backs, but it's sixteen by nineteen by eight.
Right. Okay, we're gonna have one at twelve, seven, large. And then, it was like porch or porches? It says porch is, so it may be front and back.
Two porches.
Right.
I just was wondering if it, if the eight foot on the front was still gonna give them the correct setback from the street.
It is, yes. Yeah, that was checked. Next one is Catherine Vargas.
How many has already been built?
As well, well, it is, well, what happened on that, they came to us last month, I guess, and, uh, they wanted to, to, uh, get a permit. It was gonna be a while before we could get them on this city council meeting. Uh, so Steve went to them, uh, explained to them what they needed to do, or they, they discussed it. Uh, we tentatively gave them the go-ahead, uh, and, uh, because we knew it was gonna be a while. We would have held them up for about three or four weeks, so they wanted to go ahead and start to purchase the property. They came to us before they would purchase the property, so we, we have, we talked about this at length with, uh, uh, the Vargas's. And this is gonna be a, it's gonna be a coffee shop, uh, on the corner of Eighth Street and... Yeah, uh, well, one fifty-eight, basically.
Yeah, that Avenue E is one of the...
Right, right.
That's where Google Maps takes you to put my address in?
Right.
For some reason, or they call them nurses.
And they, but, but they did, uh, with our authorization, go ahead and begin, uh, plumbing and foundation construction. I'm not sure exactly where they're at now, I know they have an awning or canopy or roof on it or something. Yeah, yeah, it's coming along, uh, but we had no issues. Steve goes over periodically to check the, the wiring and plumbing and the construction as it's going, so. Uh, next one will be Mr. John Galvan again. Uh, he's gonna be putting a shop, a workshop in the northwest corner of the Lot sixteen in the backyard.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
That's, uh, basically six lots right there.
Right.
It's the same size property as what Brandon Davis has, pretty much.
Right.
Football field size, so, I forget the guy owns the other brick house over on the, that you see over to the...
Usually being Dixon's house.
Yeah, so the shop will be kind of in the back corner, back up there. Um, is where it'll be, it's really kind of a shop and a magazine for me.
Yeah.
So, um, that's, that's, uh, that's where that's gonna be, and the house will be up toward the front, kind of, probably same level where Brandon's house is, set back, so.
And, and again, we had no issues with that. Uh, next is, uh, John Haston?
Haston.
Haston, nine oh two North End. Uh, it's replacing a garage, uh, ten by twenty foot. And he's talked to Steve, and we had no issues. They know the requirements and what, what, we know what they're gonna do. And that was it. A lot of these were built up over the last three or four weeks, so.
Okay. Any other questions or concerns on building permits? Must accept, except the building permits as presented?
Tell me.
Second?
You get it.
All fair and say. All right, here's a monthly police report from Chief Stanley Marash, please.
Uh, month of September, we had seven arrests, uh, one hundred fifty-nine report statements, five accidents, three hundred forty-eight call for service, uh, ninety-eight citations with almost eight thousand dollars in court fines collected, five of which was code enforcement. Uh, national night out was a good hit. I think everybody came, I don't know the exact number, but... Two, three hundred?
Yeah.
So, that was a good hit.
I think we're revolving two, three hundred.
Yeah. Um, next up, we got the Power Fest, and we're working on that as of speak. Um, we did get approval through the JAG grant for a vehicle, the thirty thousand dollars for a vehicle. Um, we're looking at a vehicle, it's gonna be right at forty-one, so it'll be eleven thousand out of that, uh, for that. Um, what else, trying to think what else it was. I think it's a...
Canine, anything to the canine?
Oh, canine, uh, yes. Um, right now, we've raised over nine thousand dollars, um, with donations, um, for the canine. And within two weeks, two, three weeks of it, so, um, myself and Officer Amaro went down, we booked a couple dogs. I think we picked Titan, is what we picked, and, uh, or what he picked, I should say. He's the one who's gonna be handling, um, and we'll be sending a check for the school and the canine, uh, here shortly, so.
What, what kind of dog was it?
It's gonna be a Dutch Shepherd.
Dutch Shepherd?
Dutch Shepherd, yes. So, this is what we're gonna, uh, what Titan is. So, two-year, about a two-year-old male, um, very sweet dog, so.
He's already two?
Yes.
Oh, nice. And we're gonna be looking at the contract for the canine?
I got with Pat, um, to draw up a contract, he already had one, he was working on it, so, um, he said he was just gonna shoot it in when he gets done with it, and, uh, well, I guess, we're gonna present that soon. I'm not sure when Pat's gonna be done with it.
But we still need to be trying to work towards more donations of K.
Yes, uh, we're still, um, I know, we had a bake sale, uh, Lori Stokes, she stepped up and did a bake sale for us, and, uh, there are a couple people out there that wanna do some things, and we'll just roll with them and see what we come up with, so. We still, probably gonna try and do another big thing soon, but I don't know what yet, so. We're kind of busy with everything else right now, so.
Thank you.
All right, you have questions?
Um, I'm sorry, Friday, um, I was just, before we, after we got approved with the Eleventh Street Parade...
Yes, sir.
That Eleventh Street right by the stadium, Friday night, we're gonna have blocked off because they went to, the fire department's gonna present their big flag for the homecoming, uh, national night. So, it'll be blocked off for a while, but it shouldn't affect anything too much. So it'll be blocked off for a while, but it shouldn't affect anything too much, so.
Just temporary?
Just temporary. So it's the fire department who's letting on that.
White road speaking.
Yes. So that's all I got.
Thanks, sir. All right. Here's the city administrator's bi-weekly report, please.
Well, we heard a lot about water earlier. I don't know what else to cover, though. I think we covered a lot on the water. So we're hoping to get that. People should be seeing their water in their houses clear up in the next few days. I don't even know if y'all had any other questions about the water. But then I'll move on to our grants. We had some recent grant awards that we haven't really talked about in the city council. We, we received a grant for $500,000 for the purchase of two fire equipment vehicles, emergency response vehicles. I might get Robert to help jump in on some of the specifics on this, because the fire department's done a lot, a big job of helping get the specifications right on a lot of these. Let's see. I'm not, let's see, I have down, we currently have a van that was donated by Brent's father-in-law that we carry. Yeah, we carry the Jaws of Life in. And it went real safe, so this is part of the equipment that we're gonna be getting. We can put the Jaws of Life in there and use the van as an actual van to carry people back and forth to our school. What other pieces of equipment are we looking at?
We have a live rescue slash brush truck.
Right.
We'll also go along with that.
Right, that we're receiving.
That we're receiving. So we have a, we have a live rescue brush truck. That'll be extended kit.
Right.
Vehicle, 2019, we've come to a new demo type vehicle, so.
Right.
Got a good deal on that. We can have it as soon as March. The other one is gonna be more of a heavy rescue with all of our tools, jack, struts, anything that we need for any kind of rescue situation. Ropes, soil quarter, auto extrication, anything that we would need for any of those would be in that one vehicle. Right now, we have a passenger van, it's a 12-person passenger van, I believe, with a slide-out and we have a truck. So that's what we have to do right now, depending on where it is. The passenger van will put seats back in it, and normally far the city suburban, when we have to go to the schools or anything, and we'll use that transportation to get back and forth to schools with. Or it has lights on it. We can use it in parade. We can use it just for whatever we need it for, just to get back and forth from A to Z, so.
Currently on this grant, we're working real close with the grant administrator and Texas Department of Agriculture, who is actually issuing this grant out to us to make sure we have all of our specifications and there's certain requirements in the grant that we have to meet when we get this, these vehicles. We're just making sure we meet all their specifications.
We're not trying to get someone off the lot. We're trying to get something that we can use for Bounder, for Mount County, for wherever needed, but not just for wrecks.
Right.
We wanna be able to use it for structure fires, you know, into, well, it'll have a 1,250 gallon pump on it. It will have some of the things on it that we can use, take and stuff.
Well, we're trying to get the biggest thing for our block.
So it's really a multipurpose vehicle, and the people that have been speculating for us, open up for us, almost the first one they've really done, so. They haven't really had to do that, so this will be kind of the one off.
I appreciate the work y'all putting in, getting it all together.
And we'll be, let's see, we still need a kickoff meeting, I guess, with the TDA and the grant manager. That it's been awarded, we don't have the actual contract yet. It should be, what, 60 days?
Yeah, 60 days from the day of the award, which is going on about three or four weeks. So we're probably down to about 45, 30, 30, 45 days.
Right.
And we need to get the grant rider, because there's two webinars, one of which happens this week, I believe, Wednesday. Figure out what times those are at and be on.
Right. So, but we are making progress. We're trying to be ready for when they tell us to go ahead and, you know, I just pull the trigger on the purchase, then we'll have all our ducks in our own to get this purchased. And we shouldn't have any kind of hangups or lashups with this.
These two trucks are gonna stay with them with the money that they're given. This is the, 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 the.
Right. The next grant award we got, Chief mentioned, it was a JAG award, or JAG grant, $30,000. And we're kind of doing the same with that, working with the grant administrator, getting our specs together, making sure everything's, all the i's are dotted, t's are crossed, before we go ahead and purchase that. We don't wanna have any problems with this grant on the back end, so. The road paving grant, which is one we've been talking about for a while. We, we got word from the Texas Department of Agriculture that they wanna meet this week, Wednesday at 1:00. And that's, that actually, it's a really good sign that it's very possible we're gonna get this awarded soon. When they come down, we're gonna take pictures, do a kind of meet and greet, and in fact, the grant administrator, his exact words were, it's, you know, they can't come out and say it's gonna happen because you don't have the award in your hand, but, you know, it's a, it's a very good sign that, you know, it's gonna happen here pretty quick, so.
We're kind of already paving season up. So they have to go the next summer?
Yes, but you're still talking about $275,000.
My question more is, does it expire? Is it like, after you?
No, not a day. No, no, okay.
I don't want you to go on the next summer, go, oh.
Okay, no, no. Even if that, that, we would buy the material. So, I mean, we can, we can get the material. And that was the main thing we practiced for, so, I mean, but the last we heard, it was gonna award in December. It might take that long. They may do it end of November. They may do it next week. So I don't see the next week, but, because they're coming this week, but, and still, you're gonna have the great kickoff meeting and stuff like that, so.
We can always set up an account for it.
Yes. And that's exactly what we're gonna do.
Then we can track how much we spend out of it through the bank.
Right. Well, it's gonna be like a standalone project, and that money will fund into a separate account. And then it just, whatever back and close, because at the end, it's gonna be audited. So everything will need to match up, and it's just a lot easier if it's all separate.
Oh, yeah.
And that way, you just turn it over to them, and the officers will go through it, and there won't be questions, so. But that is a requirement of the grant as well.
Do we need to do, can I come when they come?
Sure. Sure, everybody can.
Okay.
I don't know if they want everybody, but, I mean, this is, you know, the TDA would be here.
Just let us know when, so.
Yeah, we want us to know.
Here Wednesday, 1:00. That is true. That is true. We cannot be here. How do we do that?
They can only take two, basically.
Right.
Good, thank you.
Okay, all right. You should all control straws.
I'll go and bow. I got a kid coming tomorrow, so.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
You have a baby more than one?
Oh, cool.
Yeah. Still working to see the matinar.
Well.
Hey, Steve, he's sitting here. Oh, no, there. We just wanna go back.
Anyway, so, other than that, that's all I have for now.
All right. All right. Your request for future agenda items.
I was suggesting that something that you might check into. I worked for the county, county council for the last five years, and they always, the TechStop always let us know when they had extra road topping, you know, and things like that. And I can't remember the technical terms, but they would let us know, and then we just wrote a letter requesting that. And then our guys just went out, our commissioners went out and used it, you know, on the county roads and everything. And so you might check with them, with TechStop, because they always have material left over. And lots of them just sit there for months and months and months, and if it's not used, they will come and pick it up and, and take it elsewhere. So that might be something that you can check into with TechStop, because with their leftover materials, lots of times, it's a lot that we could use on our streets right here.
You're welcome. Thank you, thank you, Jeff.
You're welcome. Yeah, suggestion.
They have one more meeting. Get back on the Phillips topic, financial, drug and financials at the end of this month?
Yes.
First part of this year?
The second meeting at the month we should be.
This was the end of the fiscal year.
Right.
And Bo worked all weekend. John took all the numbers together and everything. It would have been impossible to put it in this packet. It was actually done through the weekend. She had four or five meeting minutes and everything she worked through as well. So that's why we pushed that to the second meeting.
I'm just, I wanna make sure we start off this year.
Right.
Going.
All right, so that was a request to source future agenda.
Well, he's already got it on there.
No, I'm just.
I mean, you can, I mean, you can make sure the finances are on there.
I didn't say that was necessary.
No, 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 that's fine. I mean, you wanna put it down outside it, or I think they're kinda, I'll just make sure they work quiet. This is what my question was.
We need to put on the stop signs at 13th Street.
On the next meeting, yes. We're gonna visit, we're gonna visit with Steve on what they've done so far.
Yes.
Because I know we did like two or three places and stuff on that.
Right, right.
I'm not against doing it. I just wanna know where we are with what we did.
Right.
Doing something about, what is that, Sarden and 7th, Frank Cortez intersection. Trying to get him on the agenda for the month.
Right, that'll be on the, the next agenda.
So what, Frank, that would put that on the next?
Yeah, he'd asked about it a while back, and he'd like to put a four-way stop or at least stop.
Yeah, he was in speed bomb for a stop, then, yeah, 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 that's right.
Doing something to slow traffic.
Three or four times.
Sarden and 7.
Can I ask you a question?
That all depends. Yes, that's gender.
Well, I'm really not gonna ask a question. I just want to make a statement.
That's different.
Can I make a?
Yeah. You're coy too. I'm not gonna stop you.
Okay. Okay, I know I'm very outspoken and I've been the most pleasant person through the last many, many meetings we've had. But to me, this is what is important, is to sit here and at the very end, listen to how the city and the council are handling things financially, grants, et cetera, et cetera. Please excuse this, but I'm gonna say it. You come, you fuss, you leave. You don't get the good of the council if you walk out and leave. Because I wish who left tonight wouldn't have sat here and listened about the grant for the fire department, our grant for our streets, you know, the one, I'm sorry. It's just something we've lived with for years and years and years. And you get used to it, you know? But I just wanna say that y'all are doing a great job, and I really, really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Andrew.
All right. Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. I made that motion.
Second?
Do you say it, Dave?
All in favor, say aye.
All right, thank you.